I'd like to call this board meeting to order on August 13th. Rule call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Mazaria.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of visitors, seeing none. Have our first hearing of the public.
Bambi Dillon, 228 Delaware Avenue, Lorraine. I just wanted to say that there's a event planned for August 23rd. And I hope, Mr. Ballard, did you discuss it with any of your board members?
We didn't discuss at the level you and I have further discussed since.
That I'm going to further discuss it?
Yes, so please enlighten us.
Okay, well, on August 23rd at Saint Lads Club, we're going to have an event that hopefully all the school board will attend, and it's going to be for the public to come out and meet and greet with all of you. And Joe Miller is the one that is got the hall and the union, some union people to cook hot dogs, hot dogs, chips, pop, and the public could come and talk with you in an informal, nice atmosphere. And what time is it, Barbie? Is it six to nine or something like that? Five to nine?
I think it's five to nine.
Five to nine, so, oh, boy. You guys could have a lot of fun.
Yeah.
So hopefully that you'll be there. It's really not a levy item per se, but I think it's important that other people get to come out and meet you guys and talk with you about HB 70 in the school district, and you guys could tell them exactly how you feel, because there's a lot of people that can't come. A lot of people don't get the journal. So I think maybe in an informal setting like that, we can make it like more of a family thing. I know they want to maybe get like a bouncy house for kids, so if people bring their younger children with them, so.
If I could, tag team, and I'll give you the mic back very shortly. So what we have found is there's been so much separation, division, false information throughout an entire community that this organization with being, and this is being donated by Joe Miller, who had the event.
And the citizens.
But the original event was he had an event planned for himself, and he came and says, "Look, I'll be willing to donate the venue if the citizens would all come together and do an event to pull our community together." So we're trying to unify a community with the board, with the teachers, with the parents, with the citizens, with the levy, and all the entities that are involved with trying to heal our district as we move forward and really getting some synergy as we go into this new school year. So that's really the spirit of it all, and we're trying to make it family-friendly, so anybody who can donate hot dogs, hamburgers, drinks, bouncy houses, cornhole games, whatever can be done out there, we just want to make it a let's come together kind of an event for the community, and I thought it was a very nice event to pull us together.
I do, too. So we were just going to ask for donations.
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Williams to donate all the sound and music to us.
Do you dance?
Yeah.
Do you dance? We might sell tickets for that.
I'm going to do that. It's going to be family-friendly.
He's got million-dollar knees now, so.
A million dollars. Look at a million-dollar body with everything he's had done.
He's dancing.
A lot of titanium here. I'm striking some.
I'm sorry, baby.
As long as we don't have any metal detectors there.
Yes, I just hope that, you know, we would have a crowd that would come out. I'm going to get ahold of Darryl Tucker and see if he'll put something in the papers about it, so they might be calling you.
So again, it's August 23rd at Saint Lads from 5:00 to 9:00. Come on, come on, come all. There is no fee, but there may be donations taken up there for those who want to support. The costs are helping to write this thing, and that would be kind of in the name of the citizens.
Citizens for Lorraine Schools.
For Lorraine Schools, which would be the umbrella that this is operating under. But nobody's really jockeying for the credit. Everybody's just wanting to get together and do it as a community, come together.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows that I won't be there, it's only because I'll be at a convention in New York, so it's not like I'm turning my back.
But she's done all the hard work to get it coordinated, along with.
Well, Barbie did a nice job on a flyer.
On the flyer.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if we can get the flyers out, you know, and that would help.
Push it on social media.
Yeah. So that's all I had to say, and if you don't mind, I can't stand another meeting at 6:00.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Anyone else from the public?
Hello, Barbie Washington, Riverside Drive, Lorraine. I was just wondering if we had the answers to the questions that I have been asking. I sent an email, thank you. Mr. Hill sent me some numbers for enrollment, and we had a conversation. He was able to explain some things today, but still questions about Ms. Yonker's raise, if there were any other chiefs or admins that have received raises, update on public records requests.
If you may want to walk us through your questions, and I did see the email, but just for the good of the order, if you could just kind of present the questions as they come down your list, and we'll see if we can get you some answers.
Okay, so the first ones were about the students that we have enrolled. We talked about that briefly, so I have those answers. The next one will be the number of teachers we have lost between March 2019 and current. Do we have?
That I, so I had a list in my office. I wanted to try and get something a little more current, because the number I had, I'm sure, isn't accurate, but it's a timing issue of me getting the information from another office. So I did request that. I have not received it yet, so as soon as I do, I will forward it along.
Is there any guesstimate how many teachers we have lost?
The number I'm showing, and here's the problem. So I have within, I have a database that I keep, and as we update it, based on month to month, it'll show resignations, retirements for that month. So I, you wanting to go back all the way to March, I don't have just a running list of that without going through teacher by teacher and looking file by file. That is something that people office should have, and I know they do, and I requested that, so as soon as I do, because I'm showing for last month, there was nine. That's the number I have, you know, currently, but going back to March, obviously, that's just going to be more than nine. So that's what I'm trying to get, is that compiled list for you.
Do we know if there has been more teachers this year that have resigned than in past years?
I don't know off the top of my head, honestly.
Okay.
Because you have to understand, when I get it, it's, we're removing somebody from the database, we're removing somebody from a payroll. I don't necessarily get the reasons as to why. I will see a retirement, and I will see, you know, sometimes I'll get a little more detail on the backup, but that's, again, that's month to month, and to go back beyond this current month, I don't have.
Okay, thank you. The next question is the amount of Ms. Yonker's most recent raise.
And I believe I supplied you with the current salary I have for her.
You sent another email?
No, it was on the one I sent, I believe.
So if I can jump in with you.
Please.
I saw the questions asked.
Hmm?
Then I saw the answers provided. I saw the $118,000.
Correct.
The question was, what was the raise? It's such a simple question, and when people get answers that, so what was posted was 118, it didn't say what the raise was. The raise was either 10,000, 5,000, 2,500, 18,000. That's what the question was. Why don't we just answer the questions? I don't.
What was her previous salary?
I believe it was 104,500.
Right, so we know the information.
Correct.
But we aren't answering the question that's being asked.
I guess I misread it. I wasn't trying to, see, that's the thing. Don't make it out like I'm trying to not be transparent.
I'm not saying you're trying. I'm just saying that it's frustrating when people.
Like, I'm supplying the information, and to be honest.
I'm just simply stating, the question has been asked a bunch of times, how much was the raise? And no one has said the answer to it.
And up until this point, there was nothing formal that I could. Now that it's been made formal, that's why I supplied the information.
But it still wasn't answered. It was, what was posted was the current salary.
Okay.
Now, unless the person, it did not answer the question.
Okay, and I just supplied that. I wasn't trying to sidestep. I wasn't trying to avoid anything. I just was trying to go through and supply the information on that list.
I have AT&amp;T, but I still have bad service in here, so I can't pull up the email. What is the amount of the raise, then?
So the differential would be 14,000.
14,000.
But for the salary, yes.
And just to be clear again, head of HR, chief of people.
Chief people.
$14,000.
Correct.
And we also created two new positions.
She did get two coordinator positions within her office, yes.
New positions, not just new people. New positions were created.
That's correct.
And do we have a rough estimate of how much we're paying those people?
A coordinator with salary and benefits is probably in the $85,000 range each.
Wow.
Yeah, because I think a coordinator's salary is about 60,000. I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but that's 60,000 plus benefits.
Thank you. Were there any other chiefs that received raises?
No.
Any other admins?
No.
Is there a reason, or can we discuss why she received that raise?
I wasn't given a reason why.
Okay. Any update on the public records requests, changes or policies? I requested the chief's evaluation. I went back, I said April to current, and I submitted that first in April and several times since, and I'm still waiting for a public records request.
I know mine was not done in April. Mine was done, I believe, later in May, so I do know mine was done. I can't, I don't know if anyone else's was done.
When did you, when did that policy change for the public records request? I don't recall.
Policy for?
Not requesting from you, but requesting from.
The new email address.
Um, when did that happen? April, May timeframe?
Is there any update on who was handling that account or those requests?
I do not know, other than the fact that I do know that the CEO does review them. I'm not sure who is helping him out otherwise.
Okay.
I just know I don't handle any part of it.
All right, thank you.
I have a follow-up question to the enrollment numbers that we see. And I was just wondering, when we see these enrollment numbers for the district, do they include, do they include the charter school kids since we pay for them?
No.
Are those numbers?
Those are currently enrolled in the district, not students in the district, but currently in, like actually, in the schools.
Butts in seats, right?
Butts in seats, essentially.
Okay, and because that's what I, that's what I was wondering about.
And I guess I would like to know a number, if it could be gotten, is the number of, that we would have, the number of withdrawals, not the number of students in the district, not, not who's come in, because we're doing this number where today we have this and then tomorrow we have that. There should be some very accurate, specific count, and I know a lot of students who withdraw, they don't even come in and withdraw. But I would guess we have a good idea of who's withdrawing, because there'd be some indication from another school district if they were enrolled there. So I know it exists, because that's how we do part of our billing.
So the only, and this is kind of what me and Barbie talked about earlier, the only part of that is if they're not current, if they're open and enrolled here, then as of that drop date, they would have been dropped and would have had to reregister, so they wouldn't be considered a withdrawal. We could get you the number of withdrawn students who are essentially our students in the district who withdrew if they went through the proper paperwork, like you said, and withdrew formally to go somewhere else to open and roll outside of the district. Because if they were dropped, essentially, they never withdrew, they just never reregistered.
Okay, so then we would want two numbers, the number of students who were dropped and the number who have withdrawn, because that's going to tell us what went out the door, what exited, exited the district for some various reason. It doesn't, I mean, I think what we're doing is, for example, we've had kids who've enrolled in the district, and so the numbers that we're seeing are offset numbers.
Of course.
They're just showing the enrollment as of, whenever you do that thing, as of 9:00 on this date, this was our enrollment.
Which is why I always do the year back exactly.
I don't think that's the part of the, the only part of the questions being asked, and maybe the question hasn't been proposed the right way, but there has been an exodus of students. So what happens is when people know of X number of students and families that they can count themselves who have left the district, who have withdrawn, who are going somewhere else, who say they're not coming back, and then there's a number that's presented that's way off of that number, that causes them to question, and it's really a simple thing where I think the, we're providing answers, and I think we're, especially in some of these public request pieces, in the defensive posture in which answers are given, because I get it, we've, I've been on the board a long time, right? So we look at what's asked, and we answer exactly what's asked, sometimes knowing that what is, what they're trying to understand or ascertain is different than what they ask. And then we place the burden on them, basically, well, if you ask the question the right way, you'll get the right answer. That is to the technical piece of the law, but not the spirit of it. So the spirit of transparency is if you understand what I'm asking, you answer that question. And so people are becoming very frustrated, because they keep asking questions, and because they can't get the exact right wording, they can't get the information, although we all know what it is they're trying to get. And I think it is certain, and I understand, you know, it's incumbent upon them to word it properly.
Well, see, but that's not, the thing is, Tim, I don't ever play that game. That's why I call for it.
Well, I'm not saying that you play that game, but I'm saying that the people who provide information to you or don't provide it to you, that is the game that they play, because that's a game we've played in the past. I mean, I.
Let's see, and I don't agree with that because of the fact that Barb and Emes is who's pulling the information, and me and her work together. I'm telling her exactly what I need.
Well, then I would say this, when a treasurer asks for information, and we have five meetings later, and we still don't have the information, and the information exists in the district, there's a problem. The information, there's been very little information in all these, I know from the public requests that we ask as a board, that the information exists, yet week after week after week, the information doesn't get here, and somebody, for some reason, I'm not saying what the reason is, but we know the information is there, but our ability to get information that exists is very challenging. And that's when, so what happens is, it's not about this piece of information, it's the whole process. If I'm frustrated with this part of it, now it spills over into that, and it's just this mass frustration, because everyone who's trying to get information, we have a board who's, we've talked about the lack of information for a couple of years. We have public people who make information requests, and their requests don't get fulfilled. We have someone saying that has to go through all this legal counsel stuff. We have someone saying that they have to vet everything, and they have to go through and deduct all this stuff. So this is, this is what the information is around our public information request.
But I think you're talking about two different things, and I mean, this is stuff me and Mark have talked about before. It's, if it's something that lives within my office that I can provide you, which is this stuff?
I'm not talking about your office, I'm talking about the district. If it lies within the district, you shouldn't have to come here and tell us that you haven't gotten that yet. What they, I'm just saying, you're in the same position that we are in some regards, but people should not be able to withhold this information. It's not reasonable.
I agree wholeheartedly. I'm not saying that.
If ODE called and asked us for this information, they would get it right away.
And I, what I'm trying to simply say is that I have provided it as we've, especially when we're talking about the enrollment piece. I've always provided it in the manner that we've talked, and I've always given you an update. I think I probably sent you guys daily attendance things, you know, what the enrollment is compared to a year from.
But that's not, I get that. I get the daily attendance, but the daily attendance doesn't tell us with the issue that we have is the exodus of students from the district. The daily attendance doesn't tell us that. The daily attendance is a spreadsheet of numbers that we have to go through, and we have to look at every building and say, this one from that one, and plus two here, minus 50 there. I guess if we have to get the information and then, you know.
I mean, I can, I can ask her to pull the list of withdrawals, but like we've said, you know, we've talked about this numerous times, if they don't go through the proper process, it might be a miniscule list. If it was never done appropriately, if they never formally withdrew, then it's nothing I can do, and then on top of that, that's why I, I'm trying to get you, and that's what me and Barbie talked about, was I'm trying to get you guys something that is comparable, apples to apples. That's why I always do the year back, because of the different dates in the summer, based on the drop date, based on the registration period. During the registration period, that number changes daily.
If we're trying to figure out, or people are trying to guesstimate how many students have withdrawn from the district this year, getting it comparative is not the issue. If we're trying to compare attendance in June of 2017 to June of 2019, okay, but that's not necessarily what, we're not doing comparative pieces. I think that's, and so I'm just stating, from what I gather, from what I personally experienced, is a long time of asking for information and a long time not getting it, and then when getting it, having to go back and try and get it again, because it's not answering the questions that are trying to be asked, so.
But I feel like when I supply the information you guys want, because I have supplied the number of withdrawals, but it didn't align to what you guys thought it should, and so then when I get you the comparables, just so you have something to compare apples to apples.
I've never been given a number of withdrawals.
It was on the big three-page summary I gave to Bill. It had withdrawals on there, it had, so we can do the three-year comparison, it had all that detail on there. But it's still, when we talked through it, when me and Bill talked through it, it still wasn't aligning to the numbers that you guys are hearing, so that's why I was like, well, in order to get me, to get you guys a true comparison, and I realize it's not, it's going to be everything, it's going to be all-encompassing, it's going to be withdrawals, it's going to be additions, it's going to be registration, open enrollment, it's going to be everything.
Okay, all right, well, we're in a position where we don't know, where we ask questions where we've gotten from your administration, or it's been stated, different numbers. We've had the 200 number thrown out there, right? We've had, there have been different numbers thrown out. It's a, it's a moving target, and we don't know. I mean, whether, we just don't know, and it doesn't seem like anybody is confident in definitively stating things, and we never have access to those other folks, but people want, they have questions, and they aren't getting answers. And if they get run around, if they get, you know, three pages of numbers that they have to then sort through and get confused in, at a certain stage, they don't trust because they don't feel like they're getting information supplied to them that's reasonable. And, and I know from a board perspective, we've never felt that. Now, I shouldn't speak for everybody, I guess, if, you know, but I've gotten from conversations with board members, no one is satisfied with, but we don't have to stay in this.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Just a very direct, as far as numbers, and Josh, if you could just confirm or deny, or maybe you don't know, did we have last year 6,600 students, and then this year we have 6,000? Is that, that is a number that has been shared with me? Is that an accurate?
It would depend on the day that was pulled. I can tell you, as of May, we had six, almost just under 6,500 kids. That number goes up and down based on every day.
Well, then according to that email, though, if you said in May we had 6,500, August 19th, according to this, so 6,082. But it's only showing, I guess maybe I'm not understanding this, then, August 2018, we had 5,877 students. So between August and May, we gained 700 and some students? I guess I don't.
So when that was pulled, that August comparison, it was as of, when was our last board meeting?
This is the one that we just, yeah.
Yeah, that was, I had the EMES person pull it as of that day, and went back to the same exact day a year ago, so that's why those two numbers are comparable. You've got to understand, during this time period, we're going through registration. That number is going to grow rapidly until, that's why I told Barbie, I said, to be honest, to get a fair comparison, you would probably want to look at it once everybody, I mean, there's still people registering the first week of school.
Right, and I know, I understand, but he was saying 6,500 students, so you're, from August to May, we got 700 students came into the district.
That's what that says.
According to what the information that was given to you, I'm not saying that you.
Correct.
That's what the information given to you. 5,877 started in August of 2018.
And I would, I would venture to say, being that that was the first week of August, that was probably less a good majority of the open enrollment, because that's when registration is. So, yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of kids that open and roll based on that.
We have a lot of kids that open and roll in Lorraine?
Yes, we have a large number, so when you have that drop date, that's why you see that number plummet by so many, because they roll off the thing, they have to reregister, and then once they reregister, then they roll back out.
I guess that's my question, then, how many open enrollment kid do we have coming into Lorraine? Like hundreds?
If you give me a date, I can give you the number. That's the thing, it's.
I guess I just don't.
I can give it to you as of the date.
So then, so we dropped, though, because as of August 2019, we only had 6,820 kids.
As of that date, yeah, which is actually larger than the date a year ago. It's based on.
So we had the 700 more.
But it's less than 6,500 in May.
Because of the drop date. This isn't a running tally, like it doesn't stay at 6,500.
No, I understand that.
When that number, the drop date, that's what I'm saying, if you were to pull enrollment at any point in the summer, it's going to be all over the place.
So then really, when the administration and the CEO gives this number of enrollment, he really shouldn't be giving it, because it's not accurate. It changes every day, so he should not be giving an accurate date.
It's only as good as the date he pulled.
I guess when we have numbers that change daily, that fluctuate by 5 and 700, we don't have a fluctuation of 5 and 700 students a day. Otherwise, your teaching staff wouldn't work, right? You could not, if we had an influx of 500 kids.
We don't have that many schools.
That would alter a lot of things, right? It would alter how much money we get. I don't, I mean, it's amazing that it's this difficult to figure out how many kids we have in our district.
It's amazing that.
I guess we're just having a problem of seeing that 700 people difference.
No, we don't understand.
Go ahead.
I do, I do have a follow-up question on, on the salary thing that she had. You said it was 118. The 118, that doesn't include the 30%. Does she get pick-up on the pick-up?
She got pick-up on the pick-up prior, so yeah, it would be an increased amount.
So you're probably adding another, what, 30% to this 118?
Well, it would have been the difference between 118 and 104, and the 30% of that difference would be the increase on it, yeah. But, yeah, she's always got pick-up. You see what I'm saying? Like, the pick-up is on your salary to mount. She was getting pick-up prior on 104, now she's getting pick-up on 118, so it would be that 14,000, it'd be 30% on that 14,000, yes.
So she's, she's a chief, right? I mean, is this lady, this lady's a chief, so they're the ones that got the extra.
It's probably about 5,000.
And I did want to ask, I did want to ask this, is it legal, is it legal to get a stipend for a car and to get mileage also? Is it actually legal to do that?
I'm not, I'm not a lawyer by any means, but I would think the mileage piece is reimbursement for actual miles driven, and the stipend is more for the vehicle, like the wear and tear on the vehicle.
I understand that, but I'm just, I'm just wondering that.
Because it's not reimbursement of gasoline, it's mileage considers wear and tear on the vehicle and all that stuff.
It does.
Which typically, when you have a company vehicle, you don't get the wear and tear on the vehicle.
I know, if you're paying for the vehicle, which you really are, okay, if you're paying for the vehicle, why would you get, why would you get mileage in this? I think that's maybe why it might be illegal. I mean, that was my thought on it, you know, so obviously, that's an IRS question. So, guys, I need a motion to suspend rules, so we can go into executive session over employment.
Motion.
Support.
Rule call.
Ms. Mazaria.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes. We will be back in probably 10 minutes. We've got an urgent issue that we need to handle with legal, and I'm not sure if we're going to make any motions when we come out, so stay tuned. So we need a rule call to come out, right?
Yes.
Need a motion?
Motion to regular session?
Support. There's a motion on the floor to come back out, and rule call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Mazaria.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
All right, back into our regular order here. Need approval, I guess need a motion, motion to.
motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Support. Roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Nazaria?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Is there any old business? Nothing on their old business. Reporting recommendations of the treasurer?
I have none.
Reporting recommendations of the CEO?
I have none.
Back to number 14, our next hearing of the public, please.
You're probably going to say that I'm not allowed to ask this, but is Ms. Yonkers taking another maternity leave this year?
That's sort of personal, and I don't think we would know that.
I mean, it has to be approved, right? Doesn't it, from somebody?
Not that I'm aware of, I'll say that.
I don't have that information.
What do you guys talk about in executive session?
Executive stuff, executive stuff.
That's why it's called executive. I'm an A.
A too?
Just checking. Report cards? Thank you, see, you have to ask. I'm an only child, so I was, you know, I usually ask, I try.
I understand.
Thank you. Report cards, still haven't received them, any update on that? We haven't received final report cards for our high schoolers, and some parents have not received corrected grades from K through eight. No.
I don't, I don't have an update. I do have a call coming up in the latter part of this week, and I will pose that question to the powers that be that could probably answer that.
Just to be clear, I, I do send the questions on to the ADC members and to Mr. Di Maria. I know it's hard for you guys to obtain the information in this environment, I appreciate you at least listening and caring that we have the questions and concerns, but there is no replies coming from the top either, except Mr., Ms. Kirsten Hill did share her concerns about the curriculum that was purchased. Through the chair to Mr. Coffin, is there any updates from the ADC, the meeting, is that official?
I do not believe it has been official. I know Mrs. Exander sent a email requesting that it be made official, but we have not received any feedback on the date of August 27th as an official date, so, no.
So at all levels, everyone that I keep contacting, and I feel you as well as a board, and even at least two of our ADC members, there's no answers, there's no responsibility. The, Mr. Yost, the Attorney General, expressed his feelings for our children, but it's out of his hands. I mean, there's no one, this is a state takeover, and everybody's throwing up their hands, they don't know what to do, or they're not willing.
I will say to you, because I do get to hear your questions, and a lot of them are repeated, week after week, and they're fair questions that deserve answers, and we just kind of look to our left and our right without any real answers to you. So moving forward, even when those questions are posed that we don't have answers to, could you make sure you capture those, get those to me, so I can then forward them as a forward, formal request of our board to those people who need those answers, who can give us those answers? So, so there will be another trail to those answers, those questions that you continue to ask, and we'll try to help get those answers, because I don't think it's fair for us to just sit there and say, we don't know, and let that be the final say, because that's, we're stewards of the, of the district, that's our job, and we're going to try to get those answers for you. Is that fair?
Yes, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Claire, do you always treat it as one of our questions and always...
Absolutely, you have, absolutely you have, and I appreciate that, but we're just going to have to add one more layer of bureaucracy to the process. Thank you. Anything else from the public, please? Going once. Okay, so our next board meeting will be August 27th at 5:00, right here. Anything further for the good of order with the board?
[inaudible].
What is yours' date?
It was the 27th, but I mean, theoretically, the ADC meeting has not been made official, so I, I'm not going to say, don't have your meeting on the day of that. I mean, our meeting has not been officially announced publicly in terms of an official meeting, so I guess it's up to the president to make that decision.
So next regular scheduled meeting will be on August the 27th at 5:00.[1713.83]